We can make.
What's your?
Carrie, it's ready.
Okay, we're ready. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting in order. Roll call, please.
And then?
Yes, Member Carrie.
Here.
Vice Chair Marsh.
Here.
Chairman Gray.
Here.
Member Hutchins.
Here.
And Member Kaczynski.
President.
Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the approval of our January fourteenth minutes. Any comments or revisions regarding the minutes?
Chairman Gray.
Yes.
At the top of Page six, which is a continuation of the last sentence on five, I'm not sure I understood it. I think there might be something. I was reading because I wasn't here, so I think there might be something missing in that. It just, it says, "An alternate member Henigan's suggestion is a better approach to correct or address these issues." Is that a question?
It appears to be a statement referring back to the beginning of that paragraph where alternate member Henigan has stated.
Okay.
Criteria.
I just didn't follow it. And then in the top of the next paragraph, Jerry Gray, as opposed to Gray, Jerry. And that's all my comments.
Got it. Thank you.
You really want to get mad, Jerry?
That's a, that's a very serious.
Illustrious Chairman.
Right.
Tracy, just on the middle of Page seven. Build a higher vertical surface instead of surfaces.
Where?
Right in the mid, just look in the middle.
Where's the?
It's a paragraph I said something in then.
Should be plural.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
It is impressive that the board members, in fact, read the minutes.
Yes, thank you all for reading them. It takes a lot of work to get those together, so thank you for reading them.
So, therefore, with that, unless there are any other comments or suggestions, entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. Item number two on our agenda is a quasi judicial hearing regarding a concept plan review for 110 Benito Drive. So with that, Town Attorney, would you call for any ex parte communications?
Any member had any ex parte communication on this matter? Seeing none. Okay.
None. Town Clerk, would you please swear in anybody who is going to be giving testimony today?
Certainly. Anybody giving testimony on 110 Benito Drive, please stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're giving today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you, Wayne.
And the Board. What you have before you is 110 Benito. This was previously a demolished single-family home. It's now currently a vacant lot. The proposed applicant is intending on building a five-bedroom, four-and-a-half, two-and-a-half, 2.5-car garage, pool, spa, and driveway with a contemporary-type construction with a hip roof. The proposed building height will be 31.3 feet. The calculations that were looked at in the application included, but not limited to, 7.5 NAVD finished floor, the open space calculations, the septic tank drain field, the setbacks. The staff finds no legal issues with the property, and at the time, we recommend approval in the process to go forward. The applicant is here. The designer, Mr. Brennan, is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Good. Thank you, Wayne. Yes, please. Your name and address?
Good morning, Stuart Brenner. Brenner Architecture Group, 751 Park of Commerce Drive, Boca Raton, Florida.
Thank you.
With the architectural firm for the new home for Mr. and Mrs. Brown. As Wayne had mentioned, two-story home. Reviewed the guidelines of the town and everything. I believe meets your guidelines or is less than what's required. Our height limit for the house is 31 feet three inches. The required is 35 feet, so we're beneath that. Lot coverage of 32.8%. Thirty-five percent's required. And the floor area ratio, we're 35.9%. The allow was 36%. The new two-story home, we wanted to stay with a pitched roof construction to blend in with the area. Add a slight transitional twist to the house, but not wanting to have something that's modern flat roof, which you start to see in other areas around. If there's any questions that the Board may have?
This is not a question relative to your presentation, but I noticed there is no elevator or room for an elevator in the future. Is there a reason for that?
I would say partially with the family being younger in age and the master suite being downstairs.
Okay.
They're fine without the elevator.
Good. Thank you. So it is, it is for an owner-occupant?
Owner-occupant, yes.
Yeah, got it.
It's not a spec house. It's for their family.
Thank you.
Yes.
Four bedrooms, correct?
Yes.
And, and there's also a loft. Did I see that?
It calls out five bedrooms.
Oh, five? I'm sorry. But there's, in addition to that, there's a loft. Is that correct?
Let me clarify something for the Board. It's called for a four-bedroom. I did the calculation based on a five because of the exercise room.
Uh-huh.
And made sure we have adequate parking on the outside for that. But they're intending on having four bedrooms plus an exercise room, which I classified that it could be used as a fifth. So the calculations were done at the higher number, and as such, the paperwork is presented as such.
So the clients need downstairs. They have their master suite with their office, and upstairs, they've got their two kids' bedrooms, one guest, exercising loft.
Good. My turn? Yes. Mike Marsh, please.
Stuart, morning.
Morning.
Yeah, just a couple of suggestions, and that's all I can do. But is there a reason for that home office fenestration or windows treatment to be different, so different from everything else, the one in the middle?
Uh.
Because it's starting to look like another garage, just because of the pane.
Well, I think something that may happen is we are showing the garage door with panes of a glass door. There's a chance that we'll be going to a metal door painted to look like wood, so it then would blend in with what the look of the garage is. We could play with the molyian pattern, but there was a window that the client had seen that they were attracted to that had that design to it.
All right, let me keep on windows. On the rear, where's your rear? Again, the stair windows are a little. Is there any thought to, you know, those sliding glass doors are 10 feet, over 10 feet high. You can see by your scale of your person there. Is there any thought to putting a transom above those? I don't know if the owners realize how big they are and how heavy they're going to be, but just again, to interrupt that, you know, just sheer vertical element. I mean, you're not giving up any light, and an eight-foot door is quite handsome to, to use. Just a thought, because it just seems to be going to the heavens there, so not to use a pun there. And I think it just creates a little bit more scale and, you know, appropriateness to the fenestration.
Something we'll take a look at. I think it was more from the inside looking out, just having the clean look of the glass and less metal.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, this is a style that's showing up in the town now. It's, I can think of three other houses that are very similar. And there's actually one on South Island Drive, just as you exit Benito on the west, on the east side. There's a lot of similarity here, and I just, I'm only concerned from the fact that we're getting, and it's a style that's obviously popular, but I think, given the fact that it's so clean and contemporary, I think it just needs to have a little bit more scale appropriateness to some of the elements. And what are your treatments? You have wood slash tile veneer on those insetts. Which is it? Is it, on the front again, sorry?
On the front elevation.
Yeah.
We have, there's stucco finish. There is a stone that has a light grayish blend of color to it. And then there would be a facade that has a wood veneer. It may be a porcelain tile, but we're trying to find something that would be actually wood that would weather well outside.
Okay. Yeah, again, we have a lot of porcelain showing up, which is, you know, there's nothing wrong with it, but it's.
We're, we're looking more to go with something that's going to be as close to wood as possible, but not have to be maintained every month.
Right. My last cry is the staircase fenestration. I understand why you've done it, but that's just a suggestion. Okay. You know, that stepping element. The only other thing is, Wayne, I guess, on the front, you know, since the drain field takes up almost the entire front area, I think when you come back, I know there's a preliminary landscaping. Again, you know, our street tree desire or front trees is somewhat limited here, so we need to keep an eye on that.
Okay, we'll do it.
Because the scale of that house is, is fairly substantial. That's my comment.
Good. Thank you, Mark. Any other members of the Board have questions or comments for the applicant? Rick?
I have a question for the building official that kind of ties to the applicant. We don't mind looking at the concept landscape plan. I'm interested in how the lot coverage and specifically the area where it says sod around the, the pool and, and the sun shelf, et cetera. Wayne, can you explain how much of this is sod? Is it sod on all sides of the, of the pool area?
What I've got as far as the calculations is sod going around the entire pool facing the intercoastal area. The, the pavement deck's not identified on the plans, so we didn't use, we didn't, the hardscape wasn't, wasn't included, so it's permissible to have sod allowed.
My question is.
Sure.
I, I can't imagine that there isn't going to be more hardscape than this is drawing, and would, would it then exceed the lot coverage issues?
Will be.
I know we did a Harbor Drive south last month where they had not planned out, and you calculated it with future decking in there, so that the calculations anticipated more decking. I just, this is a lot of coverage on this lot. I mean, you, you, once you put the drainage field in, you know, there, this is pretty intensely developed.
Well, the perviousness is a.
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
There was the flash drive of the color elevations, which had a site plan on it. Could we go to that for a second?
Okay.
Now, currently, the calculations of the construction document site plan that you saw are lot coverage, excuse me, one second. Our pervious area currently is at about 52% based on what we previously were looking at. At the time of submittal, we did not have time to finalize any decking that may be in the rear, which is now depicted here. And the 35% green space that's required, we're well, we've got plenty of open space that if we're adding another 3%, 4%, 5% with what you see there for deck, but this is what the client is intending to do.
So, that's a question again for the building official. Would this then be recalculated? And it would be clearly the preference of this Board that we have the calculations that match what's being shown on the screens when we review it.
He's indicated that it's going to be at the 52% number, and I agree with you that we need to be consistent. Whatever is approved at the Board, we will follow through, and when zoning approves it, it's the same document that's to be approved. If there's any changes on that, then, then we'll report back to you as such that there's been a modification. But if it's substantial, and obviously if it goes to wherein it's closer to the 35% number, then it wouldn't be approved. But he's got enough room at the present time, because he's at 52 right now, that staff is comfortable with what's being presented.
And then just a question for the applicant. This is maybe silly. On the site plan, there's a dotted line that bisects the pool. Is that, what's that dotted line for?
That dotted line is the 25-foot rear building setback.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Board member comments? Any other staff comments?
Yes, I'd like to go back to my comment about the front landscaping. I'm sure the applicant can see what we're referring to, that that sodded area doesn't leave very much area for planting. So please, if you could, get something that's specimen or substantial size on the front, because that's one of.
We will be taking care of that when we submit our landscape plans, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brennan, I appreciate your approach, nuanced approach of introducing a contemporary design in a more traditional neighborhood. And I think it's very well done. It adds to the character of the neighborhood, so very nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Members of the public, any, any comments? Good. If not, we'll close the quasi judicial hearing and, and proceed with, with our recommendation. Any comment, motion concerning our recommendation to the zoning official for consideration, such as our recommendations might be? I say that with tongue-in-cheek. Motion with any recommendations?
Move to approve with the recommendation that, that be looked at closely, because clearly what's there on the drawings or on the slide is not what was on the drawings, so we do need to be careful with that.
Good point. Okay. If, nothing to add to that, may I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor of our recommendation? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number three, which is the Town Code Amendments Related to Coastal Construction Control Line. May we have comments from staff, please?
Let me see. While they're looking at it there, Mr. Chairman, I'll just go ahead and jump in real quick. The, the Town Commission, they gave consensus at their January 7th meeting that, and, and, well, let me back up. The reason this came up, if you remember, we had modified the requirement for, the way the code used to read is all CCCL applications would go in front of the Town Commission for zoning, you know, for, to make sure that it meets the Town zoning code before it would then be forwarded to DEP. So we were changing that because I, I think a lot of you know that in a lot of other jurisdictions, it's more of just a sign-off, like, okay, is a single-family home going in the, in the single-family zoning district, is that okay? That's all we're opining on or looking at, and that's all DEP cares about at that time. So it was suggested, and we modified the code, to go ahead and provide that the building official can then write that letter to DEP to say, yes, it's in the zoning, you know, it meets the zoning criteria. It's going to have to meet all other Town Code requirements and everything like that when it comes back, but right now, it's a single-family home and it meets our zoning code. So what, during that approval process, it led to the discussion that, look, there are some other things that we could probably also look at regarding the, the homes or other structures being constructed east of the CCCL line. And so that's what the Commission had directed, that this be forwarded to you for your discussion, where you all can then discuss this, and I know the manager can add to this, but take a look at some changes or some modifications that we possibly need to make to our code regarding construction of structures or accessory structures, and also setbacks on the CCCL as it relates to construction taking place east of the CCCL line. And I can turn that over to the manager there. I don't know if he's got anything else to add, but.
Well, you have the backup sheet in front of you that lists some of the specific suggestions that were brought up at the Commission level of things that the town might consider. Just categorically, state statute and DEP control this, but we have the ability to be more restrictive than the state should we want to include extra requirements and criteria for building east of the CCCL Coastal Construction Control Line. And it's been suggested at the Commission level that you consider that earnestly and have some conversation about that if that's an area that you want to foray into and set some additional rules or regulations for consideration. On top of what the attorney already described, which is we've given the building official the ability to make sure everything fits our code and meets, meets the criteria to execute the letter to go to DEP. One of the reasons this has been on the plate so long is that with the emerging concept plan review that we do here and the code sending everything CCCL to the Commission previously, and now the new modifications we've done, there's a lot going on there. And we were concerned that in the confusion of those different steps, that things might get approved or suggested here that would then go to DEP, for example, and get completely changed based on their criteria and their regulations, and then come back here and even have a third set of eyes looking at it and going, well, wait a minute, that's not what we approved the first time. And they approved that at DEP, and now we're uncomfortable with the results. And you can see that in the town. You can see things that have been approved by the DEP in this process that have come back and make the, made the town less than comfortable in the execution of those plans. So this is kind of our opportunity to look at this issue and see if there's something we could do as a community to, to better constrain or restrict runaway design, if you will, east of the dune line or east of the CCCL, which is the demarcation line as per state regulation.
Good. Thank you, Jamie. Well, before we start our discussion, let me ask if our town engineer has any professional opinion or advice for us to consider in analyzing this issue?
Well, I must say that the changes that we've just made previously are definitely working. So, so, so let me tell you a quick, a quick story before I answer your question, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I went and did a final inspection not too long ago, and I went and looked at the driveway and the trench drain, and one of the workers came over to me and they go, you know, the code got changed. I said, really? Changed? How did it change? And they go, well, this trench drain at the property line now has to be connected. So, so kudos to all of you for standing up before the Commission, for persevering. Something as little as that is going to make a tremendous difference, and we had to make it clear in the code. So here we are, fast forward with the CCCL. I think it's definitely worthy of, of looking at. You know, back in the day, we didn't have a lot of hurricanes. We kind of sat back, and now we're seeing somewhat of a change. And, for example, encroachments should be looked at. Maybe, maybe we don't allow all of these accessories in the, in the rear east, on the east side, because of the fact that we're seeing a lot more of erosion. We're seeing a lot more of an increase in water table, and that's causing some strain on those of us, those, those structures along the coast. So I think it's, it's definitely worthy of looking at. And that's why, as a staff, we felt that, let's take this one step further here. As we're on a roll, looking at our ordinances and cleaning them up, maybe we might want to look at this a little more, so.
So Lisa, as it stands today, can a deck, for example, encroach eastward beyond the CCC line?
Yes. We have structures that are east of the CCCL structures that, that we cannot mandate, that they can't be built, because, like Jamie has stated, the DEP comes in and they give us an approval and they're, we're, our hands are strapped because we can't tell them they cannot put a building east of the CCCL.
Doesn't that, doesn't that decrease or violate the purpose of the CCCL line? I mean, why have the line if you can even build a, a fire pit beyond it? I mean.
Well, the line, Mr. Chair, if I can jump in on this conversation, the line is set by the state. And, you know, it is a demarcation line, so it essentially changes jurisdiction once you touch or cross that line and puts a different set of rules in place. I think one of the biggest challenges to the town is in our code, we allow residential estates on the ocean and people that touch that line to take all kinds of calculations off the beach area, the, the high and dry sand area, the dunes area, et cetera, towards far, towards pervious drainage calculations. Actually, we eliminated the detached pervious calculation when the lot is actually split on the plat. But there are a lot of things that we allow in our code that, when combined with the stuff that DEP allows in their criteria, the, the end result is everybody asks us on a regular basis, how did that get approved? Or how did that building get put there? Or why was that allowed to happen? And to Lisa's point, we don't have control over some of those constraints. The coastal construction control line does not say that you can't build east of it. It just changes the jurisdiction of who gets to make the rules there. And we're, we're a partner in that, but we're not in the driver's seat of that, if you catch where I think we need to.
If, if I can, it's, it's not so much it doesn't change the jurisdiction. It is just another layer that DEP has the authority to opine in that area. The, this, you know, the town still can have the rules that it wants to for that area. There's just another layer that someone would have to meet. Same thing, like if you're building in the intercoastal, you have to get Army Corps approval. You know, it's not just a town permit. It's, it's permits from other regulatory agencies, and that's the same thing if you're building east of the CCCL line.
Yeah, I think we've tripped over something very important here, I think. Just to give you a little bit of insight, other communities use the 1989 CCCL line as the rare property line. And then you utilize the required setbacks, whether it's 25 or whatever it is. So that's a point of reference, which is, in some communities, very well delineated.
Are you referring to the erosion control line?
No, no, this is the old 79, 89, prior to the current, or the, 79, sorry, the 89's the current one. So we have two lines there on all beachfront, the original and the current. And as I said, the, some municipalities use that, that old line as a point of reference because it's hardened, it's, it's delineated, it's indicated in every survey, so it's a hardened, fastened reference point. DEP will allow encroachment east of, there's no discouragement. It's, it, I think I want to correct something. The town sets the setback standard for the zoning, but the state can also dictate how far back you go. And it's a pretty open negotiable situation, it's done by usually 1,000 feet north, 1,000 feet south, and you, you join the easterly point of those adjacent buildings or building. And if there's a shadow between those two points, there's room to negotiate your setback. So DEP does have a say, I don't want anybody to misinterpret that DEP doesn't have a say. But as stated, the criteria is you have to be on piles, obviously, if you excavate any property, you have to mitigate that with the exact amount of fill. So they are criteria, but I think the most important is for us to establish a setback, a rare setback line or area that can be delineated, because we are, again, catching up, I hate to keep repeating this.
Mark, you're saying a setback line for everything, including accessory buildings?
Well, accessory buildings would have to comply with whatever the code setbacks are for those accessory buildings.
And do you have a recommendation in that regard?
No, I mean, that's, that's something that can be worked out in more detail. I mean, I think we first need, need to delineate what the reference point for the rare setback is.
Can we see what that 79 line looks like? Because I've recently seen the 89.
Right.
Can we see where the 79 goes?
Mark, for clarity, you're talking about the C-word side setback regardless of the orientation of the, the, the build.
Correct. So this is the extreme east face of whatever improvements made.
Let's get back to that. Christine, you had a comment?
Christine DeHaas at 29 Sable Island Drive. You can thank me for this conversation, you may not in the future, though. One of the reasons that this came up is, at the town level, we're doing two things. We are looking at our dune crossovers, so we start to look at dune plantings and how much beach we have actually accumulated, luckily, over the last couple of years, sometimes to our fault, sometimes not to our fault. The other thing that we're doing is, we're looking at our comprehensive plan, and the first piece of the comprehensive, the first element of the comprehensive plan that we have been discussing individually with Marty is the coastal construction one, the coastal element. And it's because, again, we are very behind in what we have been doing and what the comprehensive plan is that we're using as our, kind of our, our go-forward. So I just wanted to, as, as kind of a point of reference, give you some of the policies and the objectives out of our newly proposed coastal management element. It has not been approved, and it is still a work in order, but I think it gives you a pretty good foundation for what you're talking about. Policy 1.4.2, continue to use land use controls to prevent construction that impacts the dunes and the vegetation system. So we're talking about erosion, encroachment, we're also talking about protection, which will affect everybody. If you destroy the dune in front of your house, shame on you, we'll get you, but what you're really doing is you're destroying the entire ecosystem up and down the coastline, which is not fair to your neighbors.
Excuse me for interrupting, and would that be a, a, a sight-by-sight determination of whether there's the dune there or not there?
I, I think basically what you guys are looking at is, when you have the new construction or the 50% plus, unfortunately, I don't think we could go back and say, with a magic wand, everybody on the beach, and let's look at their dune.
That's my question.
Yeah.
So it is a, a case-by-case determination?
Yes. And my, my whole thought of that is, you've got to start somewhere else, you're never going to start. So you will have people who will have not applied by these rules, if, if you give us some stronger land development rules, and that, that's just kind of how it always goes. Objective 2.1, continue the current town policy of avoiding an increase in infrastructure capacity unless public safety so requires, in order to direct future population concentrations away from the vulnerability in the particular high-hazard areas and thus maintain hurricane evacuation times. And then the last policy that really speaks to this is maintain policy 2.1.2. And I think it might be helpful, although this is not, you know, anywhere near approval point, it might be helpful in the future if they got a copy of, of Marty's report, because he.
No, to interrupt, but that's what I was going to say, because you're giving a lot of detail here.
And I'm not expecting you to memorize it, I just want you to know that this is the direction that the commission is going for a part of our comprehensive plan, so whatever you do, I want you to know that you're not going out on a limb that the comprehensive plan won't support it. The comprehensive plan is getting closer and closer, and it's going to mandate changes in our LDRs, whether, whether we're comfortable with that at this point or not, so.
We should be working in conjunction, though, so that we're not just going blind.
Absolutely, absolutely. So the last one was, maintain the current basic density controls so that the town will experience only minor new residential development, and thereby not jeopardize hurricane evacuation rules. But I would encourage maybe staff to share Marty's report, because his report is two or three pages, this is just the element itself, but his report opines and talks specifically at certain points about the, the eastward CCCL. And so I just thought it might be, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to confuse the situation, I was just hoping to give you some kind of foundation to know that this is, you know, we're, we're trying to attack this on a couple of different fronts, so I appreciate you looking at it.
Is there any one thing we can do today to be helpful, to, one, the commission, or, two, for the benefit of the town?
You know, it is, it is a, and, and staff, and, and your attorney can speak to it, it's a big decision, so I don't think necessarily trying to grapple with it today and putting a line in the sand may be the best thing. I, I would prefer maybe you to get Marty's report, to maybe bring it back one more time, look at, like you said, Penny, the map from 79, 89, you know, look at maybe some structures that have not complied with this, to, so you can visually understand why it's probably not good to go forward in that direction. I, I don't, there's only one property that I know of, and it has already received site plan approval that is being built on, as an estate on the ocean, is that correct? Yeah, it's the empty lot that just became empty, kind of at the end of Old Ocean. So now's a good time to do it when there's not a lot queued up, and you don't have to do a moratorium or any of these other wonderful things, so.
Mark?
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Mark, any thing you'd like to add to that?
No, I think, as I said, I think it's overdue that we start to delineate what our easterly setback line is.
Can I ask Mark a question? You're, you're advocating using this 79 line.
I, I, that's one reference I know of.
And what's the difference between the 79 and the 89? Is it significant?
110 feet.
110 feet?
Approximately. It varies up and down the coastline.
But he's saying, you're saying you would apply our setback requirements to the 79 line?
Correct.
Makes sense.
It's, as I said, every survey that's done without failure refers to both CCCL lines.
For example, my particular property, the 1989 line goes right through the middle of my house. So you basically wouldn't be able to build anything on my lot if we took the, oh, you would, you'd be able to build, you know.
Remember, the 79 is quite far east, so.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying, so that makes more sense than, because the 89, you would, you would create some.
Just as an aside, I've seen communities try to use bulkheads or seawalls as reference. But again, not every town has a seawall.
Right.
Or some of them are buried and you can't see them, so.
So, so far then, to summarize, I think, from what I hear, the takeaway from this discussion is that, one, we need to do something, number two, that something needs to be a step in the more restrictive direction, but three, we still need a lot of homework to do, and, and the beginning point in that homework would be, look at Marty's report, and then come back at the next meeting and have a more informed discussion.
What we could do, too, is plot the CCCL of 79 and 89 on an aerial, so we could see the impact visually.
Yes.
Good, thank you. And, and, and Mark, if you would please, just to help me, what's the difference between the two lines, because I got lost at that point?
It varies, depending on the coastal profile, but I know it's, in some cases, it's moved as much as 110 feet.
Wow.
Yeah. But it doesn't deny you from building east of the coastal patrol line, you just have, you know, more stricter criteria.
I've got, I've got a question about memo, and it, we, we've got some suggestions, there's four of them, and would it be possible for us to learn what the existing setbacks are on these residences? On the first four items, there's already something in effect, could, could we see what that is?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, great.
I think Jamie touched on it, it's high watermark, dune line, anything you want.
Anything you want, yeah.
Well, but that gives us, we, we, we're pretty much oriented towards getting away from that.
It's only 75 feet, we don't, this commission's in the intercoastal setback, for the body of water and the ocean setback. So 75 feet off the intercoastal, which is 75 feet off the water line of the ocean.
Well, it's not necessary, we, some communities, it's only 25 feet. But remember, that was an old reference point, so, so 75 would, in some lots, would be quite severe.
So is it therefore fair to say that we, we have a continuing discussion on this point at the next meeting after we get more input from staff? A good way to leave this? Good, makes sense, everybody?
Is Jamie going to ask?
No, say that one more time, Mr. Chair, I didn't hear the first part.
We will defer further discussion on this matter until we get more input from staff and more technical information from staff, including Marty's report and including an aerial showing the two lines.
So just for clarification, we'll bring this back as a reissue on next P&amp;Z meeting with, with some substantive backup to it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And do we need a vote, or, or can we just leave it at that?
You can just leave it at that, consensus to do that.
Good, thank you. So then, let's move on to the, well, is there any other public comment? Okay, good. So let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the flood elevation draft ordinance, which has been presented to us as item number four in our agenda package. So Jamie, or Tracy, or?
Madam Engineer.
Madam Engineer.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
And P&amp;Z commissioners, this has come before you, it is somewhat of a, of a housekeeping issue, however, it's, it, the, the changes that have been made are very substantial, and it is important that you all understand the changes that have been made, and the work that's been involved in creating these changes moving forward. In October of 2017, the National Flood Plane Insurance Program, whom we've been working with for the last 10 years, along with the Palm Beach County League of Cities, have created a new flood plane map to not only address sea level rise, but also to address changes in datum that are more accurate now than what we used to use back in 1929, believe it or not. Some of those maps were from the 80s, and so it was time to make those changes, recognize the changes in our climate, and so in October, it was mandated that we follow these new maps. So the maps changed in three different ways. First, the vertical datum, and this is more of a, of a mechanical surveying issue, but the way we measure vertical distance was done by a system that was created in 1929, and now with the use of satellites and more technology, the surveying profession has changed to a different datum, and that datum is the North American Vertical Datum of 1988. So that is the current datum that we are using now that is more precise and more accurate. The minimum finished floor elevation in Ocean Ridge, I'm saying in Ocean Ridge because other areas may be different, has increased by 0.6 feet. The third change is that the minimum finished floor elevation now shows an elevation of 6.0 feet NAVD. Now, if you were to make that conversion, because if you think, and maybe you do or maybe you don't, but 8.6 would be the minimum finished floor elevation in NGVD. So, so, okay, so the maps have those three changes. Now, in the town's ordinances, we have always increased the minimum finished floor elevation by one foot. Okay? So the ordinance that we are proposing before you shows a minimum finished floor of 7.0 feet. And we do that for many different reasons. One of the most important and significant reasons is for insurance. And so this town has been very conservative and has used what we call a one-foot freeboard, and has always increased the finished floor by one foot. So the ordinance before you shows a minimum finished floor of 7.0 feet NAVD.
Lisa, just a clarification question on that. By the town adding the foot of freeboard, it's favorable to residents' insurance rates, correct?
Correct.
CRS and other.
Yes, thank you, that's what I was trying to opine.
Lisa, can you just convert that first, I'm going to, to NG, NG.
Right, so, so if you take NAVD.
Seven.
And you add 1.55, or if you can round it up to 1.6, I just do that as easy math, that would give you NGVD.
Okay.
So even though you may think, like, as architects, oh, we're lowering the elevation, we are not lowering the elevation, we are increasing the elevation, but we are using a more precise datum.
One last reference, we were at 7 NGVD.
Right, correct.
As our minimum.
Right, so, so.
I just want people to understand.
So now, so now we are 8.6.
So you're adding a foot and a half over what.
NGVD.
So I just want people to know that, because that does.
So what we are going to ask in our site plan proposal, conceptual proposal checklist, is that surveyors comply with the new datum, and they are, from here on out, supposed to supply us with elevations using the new, more accurate datum.
Which is 7.6.
Which is seven.
Seven.
Seven, just seven.
N-E-G.
NAVD.
Good, okay.
Which is eight and a half, the old one.
The old one, okay. And is, from a professional standpoint, is that engineering-wise the right thing to do?
Yes, absolutely.
Mark?
Yes, I mean, it's intent, the problem is going to have, welcome to retaining walls, I mean, we're going to, and drainage problems and all the other elements. It does have, it will sawtooth, as I call it, our neighborhoods, you'll have somebody here that's at seven, somebody at eight and a half, and you will feel that impact.
Correct.
But it's, I mean, from a safety insurance, sure, it makes sense.
I see in our audience, we have one of our commissioners who's been very vocal about this sort of thing, Don McGruder, and Don, may I ask you if you have any comment or recommendation about this draft ordinance?
I just, I just flipped back to my notes on the difference between NGVD and N-A- I just, I just flip back to my notes on the difference between NGVD and NAVD. And that's, I think, where Lisa is headed. So I think this is for the sea level rise concept that we're working on right now, the vulnerability studies, I think, is all very helpful.
Okay.
That we take it to the eight, it'll be the eight point six, I guess, rounded.
So in your opinion, because you've really studied this stuff, we're going in the right direction?
Absolutely.
Good, okay, okay.
This along with the thirty-five percent, I mean, we're headed in the right direction.
Okay, great, okay.
Mister Chairman, there's a new definition now in the proposed ordinance that explains what NAVD eighty-eight is, and in there is the equation. So when applicants come to apply and they follow our code, they can see the actual mathematics of the, of, of the datum change.
And may I, for the record, note that one of our members, Mark Marsh, just left the room. Hopefully, he'll be back. Rick?
Question for Lisa, and this is related to our building heights and our maximum building heights, which would be impacted if we increase the floor elevation, I'm assuming, of where we start. I see in the notes here that the maximum floor elevation is eight feet NAVD eighty-eight. How does that relate to what it is today? Is the mech, is there, is that, is there an eight foot on the old, so it's up one point six feet?
Well, there's a, there, we basically follow the old, and the old talks about, you know, we have to look at adjacent properties, it's not something in a vacuum when an applicant submits a proposed house. And there are provisions in the code that allow us to go higher, but not much higher. There's a, there's a maximum allowed and a minimum allowed. And then we have to look at adjacent properties, so we're, we're not allowing applicants to build to the heavens, if you will. The impact to the top of a building will increase point six feet.
Point six or one point six?
No, point, point six.
Point six.
But you have the freeboard.
You have to try to, to not get caught up in the fact that the datum has changed. It's just a more accurate datum, but relatively speaking, it, everything went up point six feet.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
We had the one foot.
Oh, but we have, but that was always the same.
Correct, we had the one foot.
We had the one foot freeboard all along.
So it's one, one point six.
Yes, I'm sorry, but that's always been that way.
And this kind of loops back to our future discussion about building height and parapets and fl... In essence, by adopting this, a house built next to my house would be a foot and a half taller under our coats.
No, zero point six. You were already, your house was already a foot higher anyway than minimum.
But the max is eight feet. It's here in the code you gave us, it sets a maximum floor elevation. So if someone chose to go to the maximum, I'm not sure what reason, then it could be another...
But that would, that would be affected by the next door neighbor rule where you can't impact the minimum.
So it could be from point six to one point six higher.
Can I try and keep this simple, because it's my memo?
Yeah, please, thank you, Mark.
The town, as a reference point, had plus seven NGVD as the minimum. Okay, which a lot of houses in this town were developed on there. We are now raising that to eight point six, a foot and above. So the equivalent of NGVD, I mean, that's, it's seven and NAVD, but it's not seven, they're not the same. So I think where you're going, I agree. Effectively, we're, we are elevating, or potentially elevating, by a foot and a half.
Everything.
Everything.
Yes.
Because, good practice, some developers, we have one here, would most likely build ten years ago, eight years ago, at seven and a half NGVD, or even eight. So they've already built in some float there. But as the ordinance said, the minimum was seven NGVD.
The map was seven.
Right, so they, but the town, that was the, the reference point. That's what a lot of developments in this town was...
The, the map was seven, the code was eight. Okay, the map was seven, the code was eight.
But I, I'm saying...
So now it's eight point six.
No, I'm saying, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about pre-existing, before that eight came in.
Before that, yes.
Which is a lot of the town, a majority of the town.
Mister Chair, just for clarification, on the freeboard piece, do we require that, or is that optional to the applicant? Do we require that they put in the extra foot of freeboard? Or it's, or that's a window in which they can configure?
We've enjoyed the pleasure when dealing with the community rating system, the CRS program, of proactively stating to them that we've, to the best of my historical knowledge, in over twenty years, been using the foot of freeboard. And in doing so, our rate is, is probably a lot better than most of the coastal communities because of that, to the benefit of the homeowners in, in Ocean Ridge. Because of the conservativeness of, of us being one foot more than the National Flood Insurance Program minimum levels.
Right, but is that mandatory to all builders, or it's a voluntary?
It's mandatory in this town.
Okay. So I remember we had a house built that was negotiated between elevation...
Right, so it doesn't happen a lot because, because contractors know, especially when they're building spec houses, that when someone comes in and wants to buy a home, and they check to see how much their insurance is going to be, finished floor elevations play a major role in that, and they understand that for the most part. We only had one recently, in the last few years, of someone proposing something lower. And ultimately, after explaining to them, it was a spec house, after explaining to them the importance of, of our ordinance in us trying to achieve a higher finished floor elevation because of our surroundings, our geographical location, and sea level rise, all these issues, that the contractor came back and did change the finished floor elevation, and in fact, raised it even higher than, than the minimum ultimately at the end of the day.
Okay, so it looks like, all things said, there's virtually unanimous support for this draft ordinance. And therefore, we're not being requested to recommend to the commission to adopt this ordinance, we're merely being asked to recommend to town staff to, to continue with, what, refining this ordinance and then presenting it to the commission, or, or do you want us to recommend it to the commission?
Yes, no, you, you need to have, we need to have a recommendation from you all, because it's in the LDRs, and part of the, you know, part of this board's duties is to make recommendations to the commission. So we need a recommendation. Now, I, I will point out to the planning and zoning members that there are a couple of places in here that we make reference to, like NGVD twenty-nine. We probably need to make an NGVD nineteen-twenty-nine, so there's a couple of Scrivners errors in there that we'll correct before it gets to commission, but there's just a, a couple of little things like that that, that we'll make, you know, make some changes to. But no, we are looking for a recommendation from you.
So we need a motion then to recommend to the commission to... Oh, I'm sorry, comments, Don McGruder?
My only comment was, and I don't, and I think we probably have ordinances on the books that when you build the house, the new house, with the new floor elevation, that's actually going to, could affect the property next door to it. So do we have ordinances for swales or drainages or whatnot that would protect the lower property? And at the same time, will you look at this?
Yes, there's a, there's a mention in the code that there shall be no adverse impacts to adjacent properties, so...
That would be a bulkhead, right?
We do take that into consideration, that's what, that's what makes it somewhat difficult. But we have to take into consideration adjacent properties when there's a new house being built or an addition being put on, the impacts to adjacent properties.
Okay, I think there's one on Beachway, at the corner of, there's a, there's a side street. But anyway, it looks like it's got a bulkhead, a newer house was built on an existing lot, and it's right next door to an older house, and so there's a, there's a brick wall that they built on that one. But otherwise, they would do swales or whatever?
Well, they still have to maintain the proper amount of onsite retention, so that, that never has gone away. That requirement on each person's individual property still remains the same. So they do have to provide some type of retention of water regardless of the elevation change.
Most of it's, it's covered, we looked at it.
Yeah.
Just one, one point, because the word bulkhead came up. What's the new Corps of Engineers' maximum height on, on bulkheads? Has that been addressed?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Do you know?
That's actually an interesting question, because we, just last week, we had a discussion on that in terms of doing the calculation and looking at the code that we have existing from the mean, low mean water table height and adding five feet.
There is five or seven feet from the mean low, that's right.
Right, so we're, we're, we're looking at what the code says right now and try to compare that. But to answer your question, no, I, that's still ongoing, I don't know what that number is.
Yeah, I guess the question is, with everybody elevating these retention walls, the bulkhead is subject to modification as well?
Yes.
That is correct, and that's being looked at right now.
And that could, again, have, you know...
That may very well require a code change modification to reflect such, yes.
And you're aware of that and working on it?
Yes, we are.
Good, good. Okay, so Christine, the commissioner, the head.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. Don stole my thunder a little bit. I'd just like to see, I, I know we have, and, and the county has, the, the byline, you can adversely affect people's property. That seems somewhat objective and somewhat ethereal. Could, could we, could we say, you know, if, you know, along with this, and I don't know if it needs to go into the ordinance, it probably doesn't, but just to make sure that we review our land development regulations to make sure that it's beyond bulkhead or swales or everything else, because I know that this has been a consideration. It's been a fight between neighbors, and if, I think, I think if you know going is, going in, whether it's a spec house or your own house, that there are, there are these, you know, we're not going to tell you what they are now, but it could be a swale. If we just get that a little bit tighter, I think it may stop some of the, some of the difficult positions that it's put neighbors in with new neighbors, that's number one. Number two, I would love when this comes in front of the commission, and I'm not saying present, present company excepted, but a visual would really help. This is where it's at, this is where it's going, this is the differential. I mean, to me, that, I think, if not, it's going to be a very long commission night. So I think that would go a long way in helping.
Okay, thank you, Christine. So may I have a, a motion to recommend approval to the commission of the draft ordinance that we have before us, subject to correcting some of the Scrivener...
Yes.
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 Next motion.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 One last item of business, Mark, I'll be quick. I understand that Marty was going to come back to this board with some recommendations as to giving teeth to the, to the discretion or, or lack of discretion with regard to building plans like the one that came us, came before us this morning.
That is correct, Jerry, and I was in contact with Marty, he should be ready by the March agenda.
Okay, good. And, and, Rick?
Yep, go ahead, finish your slide.
And, and is there anything else we can do or say today to help that cause, so we can move it along? Or does Marty have everything he needs to take the next step?
He does, and he's working on it.
Okay.
I had a comment, I was going to ask the same question because I was reading the minutes, but Chairman Gray, in, in response to that, have we asked Wayne, our building official, to give us bullet points of where he's running into problems? Or where, if we modified something, it would make it much, much easier for him? He's the one, as, as you guys put in the minutes, he's the enforcement arm. You probably have a list of ten things that, like, my life would be easier. We clearly, we clearly should be looking at that, so couldn't we give those to Marty?
I want to thank you for mentioning it, thank you for mentioning that, and, and yes, I...
This is your chance for the top ten list, Wayne.
I'd be more than happy to put those concerns to Marty so he can quantify them and then address them accordingly.
Please.
Great suggestion.
Yes, thank you.
Good, yes, absolutely. And Lisa, anything from your perspective on that regard, in this regard?
No, but I, I, I too appreciate Penny's comment, because we, we do come across some issues, and thankfully, the new changes have cleared up a lot of ambiguity in the code, and if we continue on this direction, it'll, it will only be better as we continue.
Thank you, and with that, I'd like, oh, Rick?
I'd like to, one comment, just for my fellow members here, Lisa and Wayne, because it's, all, the discussion about the datum drives back to how we are going to have to deal with drainage issues. And clearly, raising these houses is going to put more strain on, on drainage. It's just, I would suggest that all of us do a drive-by of, I believe it's number six Inlet K that was very recently built. It's, obviously, it's on the south side of Inlet K Drive, recently built. It's built to a pretty high elevation, possibly the new elevations. And the slope from the street to the house and the semicircular driveway there is very intense. There is no apparent swale. There, this is the kind of issue we're going to have to deal with if we're building our houses another foot to foot and a half higher at base elevation.
I mean, unintended or I thought of consequences.
And so we have to, we have to raise the elevation, there's no question about that. But we have to make our other plans. And if that means we need more pervious on our sites, that means we have to go through reducing, making other changes. We're going to have to do that in order to deal with, with the town's drainage issues. And really suggest you go by and, and see, it's a lovely home, but it's way up there from the street elevation, and...
Good point, very good point. Okay, thank you, Rick. I'd like to, if, with, if there are no other comments, I'd like to entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, good job.
I didn't realize, but it just, it makes perfect sense.
Go ahead, Rick.
Thanks, thank you.
Did you, did they have a soil improvement?
Thanks, sir.
Oh, thank you. Rick, that was a great point, because...